Anybody know the Tom Petty song, "The Waiting"? "Waiting" is the hardest part? Oh, there we go. We're good to go. All right. Welcome, everybody, to our February edition of the City of St. Charles School District Board of Education Meeting. Sorry, we can't be in person, but we are warm inside our houses, except for Jason, and we're going to have a good meeting. Just again, want to start, as I always do, just by thanking everybody, thanking all of you in the district for all the hard work you're doing. This is a year like no other, and we're starting the second semester off strong, so just thank you again for everything that you are doing. We will start again. Next topic is the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Merida, do you have your flag? All right, excellent. If everybody can rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, Dr. Seifert, I will let you take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I have a couple of updates for you. So, we'll just start with AMI. Unfortunately, we had to call three AMI days in a row due to the ongoing inclement weather. We don't like it when we have to call off in-person school, but kudos to our teachers, staff, and students for conducting very successfully AMI days this week. That's virtual online learning at home. It's awesome to see our learning continue even when the weather doesn't allow us to be in person. So, great job, everyone. Thank you to our students. Thank you to our families, our parents, for the understanding, patience, and we will definitely check roads in the morning, but it looks like, I know it's going to be cold, but bundle up. We hope to be here tomorrow. So, great job this week. It's been a long week. I know individually for me, too, getting up and checking those roads, but I will tell you this, that those decisions aren't easy, and we work hard to make sure we're making the safest, sound decisions for our staff and students. And don't say this now, don't look now, but it looks like more weather is coming next week. But we're looking forward to early release for students tomorrow, and then we're off on Monday, so hopefully, everybody will enjoy the three-day weekend. It's February, and that means we're celebrating Black History Month here in the City of St. Charles School District. There are authentic lessons and activities, assemblies, virtual assemblies. We have one over at Lincoln that was really, really cool. They have some really neat shirts that they've been wearing, as well as the staff. That's taking place all over the schools and classrooms across the SESD, and it highlights the reason and importance of celebrating Black History. And I just want to say, together, we are SESD United, and it's neat to be able to celebrate Black History Month. Tonight, we're celebrating School Board Appreciation Week. Actually, it's next week. We're going to talk about it. We actually have an agenda item here in just a second, but we have six board members with us tonight. And guys on the screen, I just want to tell you, thank you for all that you do. You are the best. We so appreciate your leadership and guidance, and thank you for everything you provide the district. And personally, for me, it's a great honor to serve you all and serve this great school district as superintendent. So, unfortunately, we can't be in person. We do have some great signs and notes that the kids made for you. We also have some, a neat little plaque for each one of you, and hopefully, we will be back next month in person. Kelly's really worked hard on that to make sure we celebrate and honor you properly. So, thank you, Board of Education, for all that you do, and happy Board Appreciation Week. We'll talk about that a little bit more here in just a second, but we really appreciate you, and thank you for all you do. Yesterday, we've been doing a lot of celebrations, actually. Yesterday, we celebrated the 100th Day of School. How awesome is that? I'm so proud of all the hard work our teachers, staff, and students have put in to make this year a success, and that's 100 days. Obviously, give and take, a couple of days here, two or three days because of AMI, but majority of those days have been with an in-person learning capacity, and that's really, really neat. So, kudos to everybody. I know the Torma family enjoyed a celebration yesterday, dressing up as, I guess, 100-year-old people. Is that right, Dr. Torma? Those pictures were on Twitter, so anything you want to add to that, Dr. Torma?
No. I knew those pictures would come back to haunt me. The girls loved it, though.
Oh, those Torma girls are sweet and cute, and they did some really neat pictures to celebrate 100 days. So, winter sports season continues to move along. COVID continues to affect our teams at times, but our coaches and players are resilient. In basketball, our boys' teams play each other again for the second time next week, as the Warriors look to even the score with the Pirates. We will be admitting, we're excited about this, we'll be admitting student fans into this game, and have a plan to consistently allow for a student section for the remainder of the basketball season, starting with the game on the 17th. That will be for boys' and girls' basketball games, so we're excited about that. Our wrestling teams are in the midst of district and sectional tournaments. Best of luck to all of our wrestlers at the state meet. Our swimming teams just completed in the GAC Championships and did very well. We also have both high school drama departments have been very busy this year as well, and they're getting ready for their next performances. So, we've got a lot of activities going on at our high schools, and we're excited to see our kids perform. Prop SESD, strong schools, strong community. Update, we are excited to get information out to our community so that everyone is fully informed on what and why Prop SESD is so important to the overall success of the district. So, stay tuned. More information coming soon, and we're excited about putting that on the ballot in April. Knock on wood, but I'm happy to report that our overall COVID numbers are dropping and are as low as they've been since we've started tracking the numbers since August. That is exciting. You can clap for that if you like. We are also excited about partnering with the county health department and facilitating the vaccine distribution for our county school workers. We're hopeful that the vaccine distribution process will start in mid-March. Ms. McLeod, do you want to add anything to that? Because I know you are our COVID czar.
No, I just, we have asked our staff to help sign up for hosting one of our sites to do the vaccine here, and we had a ton of people offer to help, and so we should be good to go when that comes. And then, our COVID numbers, as of right now, in our district, we have two staff cases and six in-person student cases, five confirmed, and one probable. And I plan on taking all of those kiddos and all those cases off of the list, or off the dashboard by the end of the weekend. So, I mean, that's really low. There were times we were up to 40 at a time. And then, our countywide numbers, our recent positivity rate is only, for say, our district is only 11% now. I think when we talked about it in December, it was like in the high 20s. And then, our prevalence per thousand right now, for thousand people, we only have .14 people with COVID. So, I mean, we're doing really good in our community, so.
Very encouraging. Very encouraging. We're excited about being part of the vaccine process once vaccine's available for our school workers. And then, just to finish up, as always, I want to continue to encourage and thank the Board of Education, our staff, our students, our parents, and also our community members for all their continued work, support, and dedication to the SESD. We are all essential. We find that out again this week with having to go to our AMI days. And, you know, now is still the time to push forward, finish the second year of the year strong, and I just want to encourage all of us to keep going. Great job, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Keen.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for a lot of good news there. Really appreciate it. All right, we are now at Item 3.04, Board Communications. We haven't gotten anything in writing. We've gotten a few emails come to the board with miscellaneous questions and topics, and those have all been responded to accordingly. So, we will move on to 3.05, School Board Recognition Week.
So, I mentioned that in my commentary, but I just want to read very quickly. In board members, you can see, and everybody can see in Board Docs, a proclamation from the governor and also a news release, and from MSBA, our Missouri School Boards Association, if you'll just bear with me for a second, because I want to make sure that everybody knows how important our Board of Education is. But School Board of Recognition Week is to be observed February 14 through the 20th. And again, board members, we will make sure you get your signs and all your tokens of affection that we need to give to you. But the press release says, "Missourians benefit every day from the dedicated energies and countless hours devoted by a group of more than 3,600 men and women in every community across the state. These public servants are elected by local constituents and do not receive compensation for their tireless efforts. These men and women are the local school board members of Missouri. During the week of February 14 through 20th, communities across the state will honor the dedicated service of local boards of education during School Board Recognition Week, as proclaimed by Governor Mike Parson." I'm not going to read the proclamation, but it is there for everybody to see in Board Docs. "The goal is to build awareness and understanding of the important function of an elected Board of Education plays in communities and schools. All Missouri citizens are asked to recognize the important contributions of these men and women and focus attention on the vital role these public officials play in the education of Missouri's children. School Board Recognition Week is sponsored by the Missouri School Boards Association. MSBA is a private, non-for-profit organization that exists to help school boards ensure all students succeed." So, that is the press release from MSBA. And again, on behalf of the central office team, our entire staff, to our Board of Education, thank you for all that you do, and I'm going to give you a little clap. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Jason. Thanks.
Josh, Mr. Keen, sorry. And just a special shout out to Mrs. Kelly Pendleton, who puts all this together for you. I'm sure she's, we have so many good things to give to you, and unfortunately, we couldn't give them to you. And I, not to put you on the spot, Ms. Pendleton, but did you want to add anything to that? Because you do a great job of making sure it's a special moment for our Board of Education.
Just also want to say thank you for your service, and we do have posters and cards that a lot of the children and students made, and all the different schools and the buildings were sent over. So, we will make sure that you get those and see those at the next meeting, and just want to really thank you and appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I love seeing those cards. Every year, I take pictures of them so that I can keep it as a memory. So, those are very special. So, definitely thank you to all the students and teachers that take the time to do that for us. Really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. We are now on 3.06, Audience Comments. "All regular and special meetings of the Board shall be open to the public, since the Board desires to be a good listener and be responsible to the community. Persons desiring to address the Board may do so during the time so allotted on the agenda and according to established procedures. During the audience portion each Board meeting, patrons are invited by the President to speak for or against any proposal on the tentative agenda or on any other school concern. The individual is asked to identify him or herself, limit comments to a few minutes, and avoid discussing personalities. The President reserves the right to limit the number of presentations and/or length of comments. At the direction of the President, patrons may be recognized at other times during the Board meeting. The Board is very interested in audience comments. According to Board policy, members cannot respond during the actual meeting. The Board will listen to and research all audience comments if necessary, and additional follow-up will occur through district administrators." And we do have one audience comment today. It comes from Brendan Kearns, the president of the St. Charles Educators Association, SCEA. So, it says, "This is Brendan Kearns, the president of SCEA. I am writing tonight to tell you about a program our organization, along with fellow bargaining locals in the surrounding St. Charles County districts, are sponsoring. Beginning next Thursday and continuing every Thursday through March, we are sponsoring a drive-up COVID test clinic at Harvester Christian Church. These tests are free and available between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. We are encouraging those in our school community and the community at large to let their friends and neighbors know about this. Attached to you will find a flyer with all the information. We hope for a huge turnout to help keep our community safe at this difficult time." And he attached a flyer, so the public, you can go into Board Docs, you can go into our agenda, into Audience Comments, you can click on it, you can see all the details right there. So, I invite everybody who's interested to find the flyer, and let's keep everybody safe.
Hey, Josh, I know we're not really supposed to comment about public comments, but I just want you to know, I didn't say anything about that in my updates, because I knew Brendan was going to write something. Just so you know, that flyer has gone home in our Peach Jar program to all our families. We are actually sending it out to all our staff as well, and I just think it's a great opportunity for people to get a test if they want. So, kudos to our SCA organization and the local organizations for putting this together. It's a great service to our community, so I just wanted to add that.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Now, we are going to the business portion. I don't have to release everybody to go home this time. So, may I have a motion, please, to amend or adopt the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda. Towers.
Anybody second?
Second, Malone.
Merida, Merida got it, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4.01, Approval of Consent Agenda. For efficiency, the School Board utilizes a consent agenda. Items placed on the consent agenda are routine in nature or are among the many decisions that the Board has already determined are in the domain of the administration. Rodney, if you don't mind, I'd like to, wait, is there anything? Do I see him? Oh, there you are. There you are. Because there is a difference, you know, with the consent agenda. Usually, we used to not have resignations and retirements in the consent agenda for the public to see. Would you maybe just clarify why that's in there?
Yeah, definitely. Because once an employee decides that he or she is going to leave the district, the Board does not have to vote on that. If they've given their resignation or intend to retire in a reasonable time, then it assumes that they can obviously part ways with the district, and we can move forward. Obviously, if there were other issues with employees, et cetera, that needed Board approval, such as leaving a contract early, for example, then that would go in closed session.
All right. Thanks. I just wanted to, you know, some people may go, wow, I've never seen that before. So, thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it. So, with that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda, Malone.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6.01, Library and Media Centers.
All right. So, we are excited tonight to bring forward a review of our library media centers, and we have with us tonight, we have Tina Lauer. She works in the Curriculum Department, and she, one of the areas that she helps oversee and helps facilitate are our library and media centers. And we also have Stacy Gates, our librarian from St. Charles West, and they are going to help present this presentation. So, I don't know, Chris, are you able to bring up the presentation, or do you need us? Oh, perfect.
Hey, can I just add to that, just to say that that is Stacy Gates, the Teacher of the Year at St. Charles West?
Yay, Stacy! Stacy's pretty amazing. So, some of the great things that are happening in our library are certainly happening at St. Charles West. She likes to think outside of the box and is definitely a problem solver. So, we are super excited to have her as part of our team.
We love you, too, Tina.
And Tina's amazing, too.
I just want to shout out to Stacy. Thanks so much. Tina, good job, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, we are bringing forth the Library Media Center valuation, and there's the presentation, and then there's the actual evaluation that was in the agenda as well. This is just kind of refers back to that. Chris, flip side. Okay? And flip side. All right. So, the program description is that the St. Charles School District, in accordance with the MSEP guidelines, has library media centers in all instructional facilities. All of our K-12 library media centers are staffed with a full-time certified librarian. All certified, I'm sorry, all centers are equipped with circulatory materials and electronic media to assist students and educators in gaining access to information and ideas, as well as serving as the interactive learning spaces for all students. The LMC's main mission is to serve as a bridge for access to information both inside and outside of the school, to support curricular needs, to promote an appreciation of literature, and to teach media literacy skills that enable students to become effective and ethical lifetime learners and users of information. The LMCs should be the hub of intellectual discourse, exploration, and informational access. We aligned our report to the CSEP goals as follows. Continue to implement green initiatives. We are looking towards more and more online resources, and so that is how we are implementing green initiatives. Consider current and future instructional uses when designing learning spaces for flexibility, and we are looking at different types of learning spaces in the library, bringing in STEM initiatives as well, going along with one of those CSEP goals, too. Consider how to use Google Team Drive or other similar resources to create and maintain district-wide repositories. And then, I just said that one. Consider training teachers, librarians, instructional coaches, and administrators in future-ready strategies. Continue to investigate and implement strategies. Sorry, my faces are on the way here. Okay. To ensure that the district considers digital equity for all students, educate and provide information to all staff regarding district and community resources that are easily accessible by staff in order to quickly and easily support families, and post information and links on district website to provide easy access to families. And then, our program goals for the library media centers. A welcoming space for students, staff, and families to explore and learn through hands-on experiences and research using a wide variety of literature and resources. Provide students with opportunities to use print and electronic resources to locate and gather information. To provide instruction and guidance on evaluating the accuracy of information and the reliability of its source. To provide guidance to students in developing questions and ideas to initiate and refine research. To provide students with the skills to become lifelong learners. To provide teachers and students and families with print and online resources aligned to the district curriculum. And to provide teachers with professional development on library and technology resources that will help them in the classroom. Previously, when we brought the library evaluation to you to review, we have used, oh, can you go back for a second? Thanks. We have always kind of struggled as to how we can evaluate the library. And so, recently, within the last couple of years, Missouri has created a rubric for exemplary library programs. This was a program that Governor Mike Parson put into place, and it was created, started to be created in July of 2018. So, throughout the whole 1819 school year, they brought librarians together to create this rubric, and it is based on the American Association for School Librarians checklist. So, this time, when we were doing our evaluation, we looked at both the DESI rubric and the AASL checklist in order to evaluate our library programs. Okay, you can switch now. So, we created a Google form, and all of the media specialists from the 10 library media centers evaluated their programs using the DESI rubric and the checklist. And then, the elementary librarians completed the evaluations together, even though they each submitted their Google form separately. They kind of worked together to complete them because they're very similar. And then, the results of the evaluations give us an overview of what an exemplary library program should look like and a level in which that we can grow to meet the rigorous expectations from the state. And on the evaluation, the actual document, you'll see that there are pie charts and some paragraphs about the checklist, and this is just a snapshot of what is actually in the full report. Differentiation instruction is occurring in all of our programs. Most of our programs have time in the day to plan and curate resources. Actually, I switched that. I don't know why it didn't refresh, but actually, 90% of our programs said that they have the time in the day to plan and curate instructional resources, but only one program stated that they have the 15 minutes of uninterrupted plan time. That's not in a flexible setting. So, that was what made it an exemplary program, was if they had 15 minutes of uninterrupted plan time in a flexible setting. And then, collaboration on planning of library resources, school improvement plans, and professional development for teachers is not occurring in the majority of the programs. However, most of our library media specialists do feel that they are included in decision-making regarding the library policies and procedures. All the programs provide a variety of technologies. However, the majority of our schools are still working towards providing that open licensed digital resources and the social networking to offer library access 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The majority of our programs have adequate space that includes space for a variety of activities, such as whole groups, small group, multiple groups. The spaces are inviting and promote collaboration, innovation, and creative problem solving. And our programs are working towards providing instruction on ethical engagement and multiple types of literacy, including providing a diverse collection of resources, response to the needs of the community, and aligned to the district curriculum. And while this is occurring in all of our buildings, it's not quite occurring at that exemplary level according to DESI's rubric. All right. And we have compiled, based on the AASL checklist, the different topics in that checklist. And the first one is inquire. And so, when you inquire, you're asking about new things. You're building your knowledge by critically thinking, identifying problems and strategies. And so, these were just some things that we have been promoting in the library the last couple of years. We've been promoting coding and STEM challenges and reliable research. And then, of course, we threw in a picture there of what would a library look like as it's being built. So, that's obviously covered out when it was being remodeled there. So, all right, moving on. To include, our libraries are working very closely together to make sure that all of them have books and resources for inclusiveness. And so, these are some pictures from our various libraries, showing you our diverse collection of books, award nominees, and our diversity of resources.
And Tina, I'd like to just mention to you, while it's not a part of this report, our libraries are currently under their curriculum revision, and so, they will be selecting additional materials for their libraries, and this is one of the areas that they will focus on as well.
Collaborate is another of the AASL standards. And so, in these pictures, we're showing collaboration through reading clubs, STEM challenges, readers' parties, collaboration with teachers and students on curriculum, and collaborating with each other to figure out how to break into that box that they're trying to break into. If you've never tried breakout EDU, it is a program where they have like a box with locks on it and clues to get into the box, and then there's usually something special inside the box for all of them once they get in there. So, it's kind of like gamifying education. So it, it's makes the, it's kind of like gamifying education. And then curate, curate is making meaning for oneself by collecting, organizing, and sharing resources of personal relevance. So we've got some pictures of some of our guest readers and some reading collections that the librarians have curated. And then book tastings. So if you've never done a book tasting before, it's curating favorite books and making kind of like a menu and different, different rounds. This was, I believe, I can't quite see it because I don't have my glasses on, but there was like an appetizer round and a dessert round and a main dish round. And then they, they get together in the, in the, in the tables and they kind of have like a little meal where they discuss the books and, and, and what, what makes them special to each one of them.
Who's that good-looking guy in there?
I don't know who that is. And of course, our wonderful Executive Secretary Niedra is in that as well. And explore, giving our students ample time to discover and innovate in their growth mindset. So we've got the book fair there with all different types of resources, the STEM Olympics, Exploring with Ozabots, Makerspace, Makey-Makeys, and Building Their Knowledge Through Exploration. And engage, we've got technology integration using augmented reality. Celebrating DOT Day, that was, I think, it was a while back, a couple of months ago, I think, with the Quiver app. And then during our extended closure, one of our librarians had them do virtual reading bingo to kind of engage them throughout our extended closure last year. All right, and then our opportunities for growth. So some recommendations that we came up with based on the checklist is to align the curriculum to the AASL standards and Missouri Learning Standards for consistency among the buildings and as a support for teachers and students. And currently, the library media specialists are in a curriculum revision and they are aligning their stand, their curriculum to those standards. Create a more streamlined process for collaborating with teachers in the buildings. That includes time to, to work more with the teachers on upcoming curricular needs and including librarians as resources on curriculum content committees. And as a district, investigate the possibilities of moving towards a future-ready aligned district. This is in the CSIP plan. And that would also include library media centers if that was something that was decided upon at the district level. And that would provide all the stakeholders with a consistent framework from which to move forward in providing equitable access for all students. Continue to update materials, resources, and physical spaces to best meet the needs of all patrons and to evolve programming to address current trends in library management. And some of the examples would be Makerspace, STEM, student-driven clubs and interest groups, and community outreach. Work with school and district leadership on the school improvement plans to ensure that the library media centers are equipped to provide the resources needed for students to learn and grow academically. Meet regularly with district leadership to ensure that the library media centers are up to date with current technology and online resources for the teachers and the students. Communicate and establish relationships with community stakeholders to develop library programming based on community needs and to ensure that all of our learning, library media centers have a presence on the web for easy access to resources and to promote the love of reading. And Stacy, the other day, when we had our first AMI day, she tweeted out to make sure that she didn't forget about the librarian, that she was there for anybody who needed her and kind of as an outreach. So we kind of wanted to make sure that we're all promoting that and that the students know how to get in touch, no matter where they are, how they can get resources.
Can I add, Tina, that, and I, because I've seen it, I'm there. Stacy, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and I know our other librarians are doing it too. But Stacy does an excellent job, just not on AMI days, but with our All-Access Plan. You go in there on a given day, she's got three or four, literally, three or four computers set up, working and helping different teachers. And if you're on Twitter, you just see a lot of thankfulness, a lot of congratulations to Stacy just for all of her hard work. And the teachers have just really, really benefited from her help and her assist, her assistance. So I just want to make sure you guys knew that.
And to add on to that, I mean, I think one of the reasons, one of the many reasons she was selected by her colleagues to be Teacher of the Year at St. Charles West is also from the high level of support that she provides. So while many of our libraries haven't quite gotten to this, to the place where they're really providing professional development or resources for professional development customized to the specific needs of the teachers, Stacy's doing that. And she really took it to the next level during the closure last year and has extended that into this year with all of the resources that the district provided. And then she went out and sought out multiple resources that she could customize or provide for the teachers because she knew that there were some still needs and areas that needed support at St. Charles West. So that is certainly a bright spot in providing that kind of collaboration and support to staff.
I have a couple of questions, please. Stacy, first, congratulations.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. The couple of questions first is when you do, you mentioned the opportunities for growth or the recommendations here, does that mean that those are the things that you're going to work on next year?
Yeah, for the next two years, because this was back, this is a evaluation of the last two years. So this is moving forward. These are some recommendations for us to look into and continually evaluate the libraries on that rubric so that we can continue to grow and towards that exemplary model.
And so, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, if you're gonna.
I was just going to say that when you look at some of those recommendations, we've even made some strides already this year in some of those areas. Like, for example, talking about future-ready. Well, the pandemic kind of presented itself to us that that was a great opportunity for us to really expand our technology, expand our base, be able to provide hotspots and Chromebooks and, and flip our classrooms into that virtual world for our students. And so where we were last year to where we are now are two drastically different places on that continuum. And then as we're digging into curriculum this year too, we're starting to really tap in with some of our librarians and asking for help with resources. And, and that'll be a part of the curriculum process moving forward is using, tapping into our librarians and helping tap into their expertise in finding additional books and resources and providing those additional resources in the libraries as well to help support the curriculum.
And being able to align our curriculum to the newer AASL standards will definitely do that because they focus on the student and what the student is able to do while they're learning. And so that's where the II, CE, EE, the ICs, as I like to say, come into play. So getting them to inquire and collaborate and include all of those, that those six standards that are part of the AASL, so that will help us as well.
Well, so actually, that does bring me to my other question. So the, I noticed on the evaluation, the written document that you had there, there are basically 10 people voted in that survey. And it seemed to me that in certain areas, in fact, in a number of areas, we were in that not-quite area. And like six out of 10, six to 10 of our people voted, you know, our librarians voted that we were not in that area. So, and I realize that some of that falls into your recommendations here that you have. But I guess my question is, you know, why is that? That, you know, we have six to 10 of our librarians saying that we're not doing so well in certain areas. That's, that's a lot of our librarians at one time. Could you kind of respond to that or tell me what am I looking at wrong?
No, I think you're looking at it correctly. There's a couple of things that you can analyze from this. One is from the Missouri exemplary standpoint, they're looking at ideally a situation in which a librarian is on a flexible schedule, meaning that the library is open with anyone able to come in and out at any time. Typically, that librarian has an aide that would monitor the desk and handle check-ins and check-outs, which would allow the librarian free movement through the building to have collaboration with teachers at the time of need in the classroom or have the students come with them, with the teacher and the librarian co-teaching together. Our model at the elementary level does not allow for that because they are planned time and we just know that. We have to work within the confines of that until we can make a way that we can have flexible scheduling for our librarians at the lower level. So that's one aspect that does and has been a concern for a lot of our librarians, especially our elementary librarians that often feel like they're kind of judged because they can't meet that, that standard just because of the nature of our scheduling. But the other thing to think about is, is that, you know, this is our, like, kind of shoot-for-the-moon. This is our ideal. So as we have new administrators come in into different buildings, they have to learn what the librarian would like to do within the building and find a footing in that, whether that's professional development, whether that's being able to collaborate with teachers. And it takes a while, both for a new librarian or for new teachers, to develop a rapport that they feel comfortable and trust each other in that collaboration. I know when I started in my building, it took about five years before I had a solid group of people that recognized what I was able to do and recognized what I wanted to do in the building. And those aren't always the same for, for different people in your building. They don't know that. And teachers are inherently, and in the best possible way, very protective of their time and their space and their kids. So it takes a while to build that relationship. And I think that's what, you know, we're trying to do as some librarians, see what's happening in other buildings. They can try to incorporate those, those types of initiatives in similar ways, but tailored to what the needs of their students and teachers are in the building.
Stacy, that was a beautiful response. Thank you. And I think too, like, it's a journey. So I think back to when I started with the district, I've been here now 15 years. When I came to the district at the elementary level, at that point, we had seven elementaries and we had two librarians. And the two librarians at the elementary level just literally traveled to all of the elementaries just simply so students could check out books. That's really what, what happened. And so over time, we were able to add additional librarians. And then we were also able to help with some planned time inequities at the elementary level. So librarians at the elementary provide library lessons where the students come in for, you know, an hour a week. That might be two 30-minute sessions or an hour session where they're able to have a read aloud in a lesson and check things out. And they connect things through the curriculum at that point where it's just a very different structure than the, the super flexible one that Stacy is talking about, where it would be very organic and as needed. And the librarians are really kind of like a co-teacher in many, many regards.
So does that make the AASL standards, as you kind of alluded to, Stacy, kind of a pie-in-the-sky goal?
That's more the Missouri exemplary library standards are our shoot-for-the-moon pie in the sky. The AASL standards are those inquire, include, collaborate, curate, explore, and engage. And those are the ones that we're building into the curriculum and what we do when we have activities and lessons with our students. So the AASL standards are more inherently natural to what happens within a classroom. The exemplary library program standards are looking at it holistically from a, both a teaching perspective, but also a management and administration perspective. From a, because as librarians, we're, we have all three hats within our building and within our libraries. And so they're kind of two different ways of judging. And so Tina was able to kind of mesh those two ways together in order for us to evaluate our programs so that we have something moving forward that hopefully will allow us a better overall view of our libraries as opposed to how we had been doing it. You might remember in years past, it was, we were trying to bring in some of the things that we were doing program-wise, but it was more focused on circulation, which wasn't a very holistic picture of, of the activities that happened within the libraries.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question about the elementary libraries' materials. And I believe very strongly that representation matters. And I would like to ask, well, Danielle, you were talking about diversity of materials. And I know that less than 70% of our students are white. And what do you have in place to bring the materials to reflect the diversity, the ethnic and racial diversity of our students? And I know that different schools have different makeups.
Yeah, and so with our curriculum revision process that we're going through right now, one of the, one of the things that they will get to later in the spring will be material selection. And so the majority or a good portion of the budget that we have at the district level is directly given to the individual libraries so that they can select pieces of literature and books and resources that their library needs. And because they have had a lot of local control, because they're building budgets, the librarians make their determinations about their collections based upon what they have in their building. And so one of the areas that they will focus on, it will be to look at diversity and try to shore up some of those gaps. And then each year, as our librarians go through, they're, they're purchasing books every year. And so that will be an area that we, we will ask them to review and look at each year as we go forward. And one of the things that are in the recommendations too, we do this, this review every two years. But one of the, one of the recommendations is to meet more regularly to talk about needs of the library, resources, professional development, those types of things. And we do have the Social Justice Committee that's starting at the district level. We're starting to make, make some changes and momentum there that I see that this is a part of that and that we will keep, keep the conversation moving forward with this each year as we move forward. To make sure that we are, it's not going to change drastically overnight, but we need to continue to make, make those changes. So, so our students have an opportunity to see themselves in our resources. Our students who are Caucasian have an opportunity to see others from differing backgrounds in their resources so that we can all really have that more inclusive opportunity for students, so.
And I would add that a lot of the vendors that we work with from a library perspective, they have multitudes of lists and things that they recommend for BIPOC books and authors. They allow you to do audits sometimes of your own collection so you can see both age of your collection, genres, what areas are you including? And that would also include diversity audits and that as well. So there are things that we have available to us in addition to just following, like on social media, I follow a lot of different authors so that I get a variety of perspectives on books that are being put out and can provide a wider variety to my students.
And I think where we are right now with society too, I cannot even tell you how many emails just this week alone that I've received in terms of curriculum materials and specifically literature that is geared towards students of color of, you know, it is Black History Month. So it's really about how do we create an environment and resources where that's a part of our everyday? That that's not just where we look at it during the month of February, but we're really, we have that at our disposal and that's a part of our everyday in our classroom. And so that's the direction that we're starting to really have a close eye on and that's where we're heading with curriculum. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Any other questions?
I just want to think, the other librarians are watching online, online live on YouTube and just kind of a shout out to all of them and their hard work that they do every day in their libraries.
And many of them, I know we touched on it just briefly, but many of them are creating Makerspaces in their libraries. They're infusing them with technology. They're just doing lots of great things to engage students. They're infusing them with technology. They're just doing lots of great things to um engage students in different ways and bring their libraries to life.
Yeah, I can't brag enough on my colleagues and the work that they do as well. And the partnership and collaboration we have as a group is, is really great. The elementary really work well together and sharing their resources and coming up with lesson ideas. And that really helps because they're working with multiple grade levels, lessons every week um and trying to come up with new things that relate around the new books that are coming out every year and making it relevant to the kids in addition to any STEM activities and maker space they're doing. So I know they'll be glad to having, going back to a regular library set setup once hopefully we can move past this part of COVID and the pandemic, so.
And to piggyback on what Stacy says, we've been pretty much bragging on her tonight, but we also, just a shout out and kudos to all of our librarians. They're a great group, hardworking bunch of people, and we, we appreciate everything they do.
And we've asked a lot of them and they're rolling with everything that we've asked. So that flexibility is key that we've talked about before and we're all in it together.
They've adapted very well this, I mean, every year, but especially through the pandemic, they have really done a nice job of meeting student needs wherever they're at.
Can we go back to the full Zoom uh panel?
Yes, we can.
You wanting to do that before we make a motion, Donna?
Well, I think we've seen the presentation. Do we need to keep that up? Thank you.
Wanted you to memorize it.
Test me.
Awesome, awesome. Well, I, I, I think, you know, Stacy deserves teacher of the year because she had the courage to come before us. And, you know, we're, we're such a, we're such a tough crew here that uh, you know. So, no, in all seriousness, Stacy, congratulations. Really, really happy for you and, and thank you so much for, for everything you do.
Thank you. Though any of the other nine of them would have done a great job tonight, too.
They were planning on coming live, but because we're on Zoom, they are at home watching on YouTube, so.
We, we love them all. We do, every single one of them. All right, may we have a motion, please?
Sure, I, I move to approve the library review. I'm sorry, I need you to read it, Charles.
Oh, sorry, I had, I had the report up. It is the move to approve the library media center program review as presented.
So move Malone.
I second Gibson.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, once again, Stacy, Tina, thank you so much. Really appreciate you, but you joining us tonight. And you, you're wel- you're welcome to stay on if you wanna, if you wanna finish it out with us.
I, I think we'll pass, but thank you for the offer.
I'll just box the rest on YouTube, but thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, item seven point zero one. Um, Jason, I, am I turning this over to you or is this Charles?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be both of us. Um, I'm gonna have Charles kind of highlight some things for you. He's kind of, along with Rodney, Rodney might have a few things as well, kind of head, head spearing our, our um, our efforts in this furlough issue that we have. And, and basically I'll just set the toe, I'll set the uh stage for you. There, there is a legislator uh uh letter that we would like to have Josh and myself sign. So approved by you all to be able to let uh the governor and our elected officials officially know uh how important uh this unemployment repayment issue has become. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it over to Charles and maybe Rodney wants to add a couple of words.
Hey, if you don't mind, can I, I would just like to give the board some data because I know Charles will get into the nitty gritty. But I, but I don't think, since we've been talking about this, I've actually given you numbers to conceptualize around this issue. So um, we had a hundred and fifteen employees except the furlough. We had a hundred and fifteen employees that actually received benefits. However, we had sixty of those hundred and fifteen that were denied. Okay, and this is where the issue is coming in, is coming in with those sixty. We had fifty-five that were not denied. And I think a question would say, well, why were some denied versus others? We don't have a clue. That's, that's what makes this, that's what makes it an issue. And it's, it's a mystery to be very honest with you. Out of that sixty, we had twenty-one that filed an appeal. Um, well, you may be saying, well, why didn't all sixty file an appeal? It's because the, when those denial letters, some of them, they got in the mail. Some of them, I guess, was on the unemployment portal. So they either didn't get them or didn't file an appeal. So to be, to I, to, I can't answer that question. Um, so twenty-one of those sixty filed an appeal. Four out of the sixty actually received a statement from unemployment saying you owe us at the end of the month. Only four, why only four? I don't have a clue. Uh, we have four different employees that went through an appeal hearing. It's called the tribunal, in which I was a part of that conversation to help support them. We still haven't, um, we still haven't received a verdict if it was approved or denied, so I don't know anything about that. And then, you know, through all of this, we've worked with um Slenda to draft that letter for the, um, for Josh and Jason to sign. So I just wanted to give you some data around what Charles is about to tell you, because I think it'll, it'll, you will understand it better from our employees' context rather than the general context.
Yeah, thank you Rodney. So that's a, a good quest, good uh setup to um this conversation. So truly, as a, a matter of the, the state's consideration here, we're, we're not a party to these demands for repayment. These are demands being made of our employees. But because um we pu- pointed out the opportunity that they might have to uh go on unemployment and it, and because we did end up rehiring all of them, we feel an obligation to try and advocate on their behalf. So this has been a known issue for probably a couple of months at least. But from the very beginning, uh the state system was overwhelmed. Um, they were um understandably unprepared for the onslaught of applications they got. But they also seemed um, they were, they were very difficult to uh get a hold of. They were very get, difficult to get the same answer out of for the same sets of employees. So as Rodney identified, we filed one single mass claim on behalf of all of these people. They all worked for us and half of them were approved, have still to this day had no question asked of them. Uh, the other half, uh, and again, it's not like all the bus drivers are in one group and everybody else is in the other or something. It's, it's a mix and match. And so the, um, I say that only because now we're at a point where the state has decided, um, the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations Director Anna Hui and the governor, Governor Carson, have kind of doubled down on the idea that the state owes it to its citizens to recoup this money and has implied that it has been paid fraudulently to people uh trying to game the system. So on that basis, frankly, that just made me mad because I know who our people are that we laid off. We did not lay off our highest paid employees. We laid off our lowest paid employees who needed that unemployment to continue paying for rent or their mortgage for food and other necessities. Now, thank goodness, we have been able to return them to work, but they're still in some of our lowest paid job categories. So they are not in a position, if the state presents them with a bill for six thousand, eight thousand, or even twelve thousand dollars, um, to just reach into their back pocket and pay that kind of money. I would have a difficulty paying that, and I'm number three on your list of uh employees. So um I, I have great empathy for people that merely filed an application because they were unemployed and then the state bungled it. Uh, and maybe they did get overpaid. Maybe they were authorized inappropriately. But if either of those things happened, it was not our employees' fault, it's the state's fault. And so now we have, again, the governor doubling down on recouping this money and seeming to make it a um, a righteous cause. However, what he doesn't want to address is that the, the federal money is about three-fourths of all of the money that's being talked about here, and the federal government does not want it back. The rest of the money that's being talked about here has been paid in, by employers like ourselves. Uh, we pay when we have employees that make claims. And so um this week in the legislature, um, there have been seven bills filed, two by Democrats, five by Republicans with a, a variety of fixes. And the reason that they've all been filed is because the governor and his director of Labor and Industrial Relations could just administratively determine not to pursue this recruitment. But because of their insistence on holding their position, um, there's a bipartisan um group of legislators uh that are working to see if they can get it overturned legislatively by basically telling the state to stop. And so uh again, the fixes were debated in um it, in a specific committee in the House this week. It's the special, uh, it's the House Special Committee on Government Oversight. Um, Representative Jared Taylor is the chairman. Uh, he's from southwest Missouri. Jay Eggleston is the vice chair from northwest Missouri. There are a couple of, of um representatives from our area. Representative Lavasko from uh O'Fallon is on that committee. And uh Representative Bosley from St. Louis City is also on that committee. And um so they had, they debated these bills with um unanimity in the fact that they want to do something. Um, how much they do was the question. And they've actually come, I think, to, um, oh, the other person that testified and was in on this discussion is another representative from St. Louis City or county, Peter Meredith. Um, and he suggested a, a fix that appears to be uh getting ready to be molded into a single bill out of all seven of these. And so the proposal um that appears to be coming, and I say appears because it isn't done yet, um, the House uh Committee on uh Government Oversight has another hearing in closed session on Monday when they go back to Jefferson City to discuss this further. But their in, their stated intention as of now is to roll these seven bills into one. Um, and then um direct that the state use twenty-five million dollars of the CARES Act money that's been, that's already in the hands of the state to cover the state's portion that's been paid by employers into the fund. And then to just forgive the federal portion. Now, in every case being considered here, if you are found to have fraudulently received uh unemployment benefits, you would still be on the hook to pay them back. But we feel confident, uh Rodney and Jason and I, and we've, of course, consulted our attorney, uh Slenda Brazier. And she agrees that our uh employees who were laid off in the spring for no reason that we can see could be considered a fraudulent applicant for social security or for unemployment benefits. Um, just as a similar example, Chartwells laid off everybody except those few who were um still working to serve uh student meal kits. None of their people have been denied claims. Uh, they do that on a routine basis, even over summer break, and they even file over winter break during a two-week holiday and are approved. So we have no um reason to believe that any of our applicants were fraudulent and we felt it was incumbent on us individually as well as collectively to consider what we could do to advocate for our employees. Um, I'll tell you that I submitted written testimony on each one of these seven bills uh that was heard um li- earlier this week. By the way, that's an, actually a new but very easy process. They used to require you to come to Jefferson City to, to provide testimony. Because of COVID, the House is allowing written testimony on bills that are being here, heard in committee. Um, and so the Senate is not, they're not quite as afraid of COVID, even in spite of about a third of them having gone home with it. That's the end of my editorial comment on that subject. But the, the House is accepting written testimony, so I did that as an individual. I identified myself by position but said, this is my opinion. Um, I also contacted my own state representative and senator in my district, and I would encourage you to do the same. Um, and then what you have in board docs tonight is a uh letter that was drafted by Slenda um based on her understanding of the issue from both a legal and a moral standpoint. And she specifically points out her um personal knowledge of a teacher in another district who retired and then filed for unemployment and was approved and has never had a request for repayment. Typically, teachers are never eligible for unemployment because they're um, they're considered to have a seasonal break in that summertime. And so they're never eligible. And so she included that as a kind of an egregious example where the state has uh probably got some fraud, but has not chosen to pursue it. Where we have bus drivers and paraprofessionals and uh custodians that were going after like they're criminals. And so again, there's, there's um, you probably can hear my passion in this. I just feel like um we advised our employees the best way we knew how in a time when the district needed to save money and when the federal government was actively advertising a six hundred dollar per week at incentive on top of what would normally be their unemployment. And so now for the state to come back and request that money back, I just feel is at, it lacks common sense and it lacks common decency. And it is not um necessary under the law. It is currently, though, the position of the governor, and so that's why this legislative fix is being considered.
Well said, Charles. Just so Board of Education too, I sent emails to our representatives and sen- senator as well and did not hear back from them. So, and I, and I just, because I know we have bus drivers and support staff that are affected by this listening tonight. And I just want to make sure they know that we're standing behind them, alongside them, and we're gonna see this to the end with them, so.
And that is a very strongly, I was gonna say, that's a very strongly worded letter, too. It's, it doesn't mince words. Yeah. Any questions for, for Charles, Rodney, or Jason, or any discussion?
I, just one final comment, Josh, I might say, we, we obviously are gonna follow this along. Um, we certainly hope that the governor will see the error and just administratively change it. Barring that, we hope that this legislative fix will happen quickly. All of these bills that have been filed do have an emergency clause, so as soon as they're passed, either uh the governor vetoes them and the legislature could consider overriding that veto or they would take effect with the governor's signature either way. But we hope that they will um hurry along with this because, you know, we obviously have some employees who are very, very nervous right now at the demands being made of them.
Yeah, yeah, I hope, I hope uh, I hope the powers that be see the light. And, and in my opinion, if, if this uh letter that, that we send helps push it, then it's, in my opinion, the right thing to do. If there are no, oh, uh, we need a motion to approve the letter addressing the repayment issue as a result from the furlough unemployment received by staff as presented, please.
I make that, I'm sorry.
So move Malone.
Well, we'll say Lori seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're all good. We're all good. Uh, all in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um, since we're on a roll, talking about uh the state legislature, um, seven point oh two, and, and I, I will say, and I, this is, this is my opinion. This isn't necessarily the opinion of the board as a whole. Um, but I, I feel like public education is under attack by the state legislature. Um, and it's, it's extremely disheartening. Um, what, what we are seeing is that there is a concerted effort to take funds away from public schools and siphon them to private for-profit schools that do not have the same accountability, do not have the same responsibility to, to teach all students like we do. Um, and, and this particular, uh, and actually, Charles and I were talking after the last board meeting, I think, about, you know, do, should we come up with a board vote for an official letter? And, and MSBA did draft this one on behalf of all school districts. Um, so we were, we were happy to be able to bring that to this meeting. And if, if majority of us do vote for it, um, we, we will send it, uh, we will send it to the legislature. And this one is, it's much more comprehensive. It, it's not just for the, because, and Charles, you had mentioned the, the House bill. It's not just for the, because, and Charles, you had mentioned the the House bill in the last meeting. But since then, the Senate bill has come up and it's really seemed to have been fast-tracked. And Charles, I don't know if you wanted to go into that anymore.
And so Caleb, Caleb Rowden, the majority leader from Columbia, is term limited. He has actually been a pretty moderate voice to this point, but because he's term limited, I think he has found his voice since he doesn't have to worry about reelection and has made this a priority. And so it is moving fast, and Senate Bill fifty-five is a public education destroyer. It includes just about everything you could think of that will siphon money and just cause significant institutional turbulence for us. We always get a bad rap some as public educators with the current majority in Jefferson City because they think we're just about preserving the status quo and preserving our jobs. But if you look at some of these efforts, they are really not aimed at helping children for all the reasons that Josh already mentioned. There's no, there's not the same level of accountability for charter schools that there is for us. There's certainly no level of accountability for voucher tax credit plans that would allow parents to take their money wherever they would like. And even then, the open enrollment bills that, you know, in a good year, we might say, hey, we can out-recruit Orchard Farm or Pattonville or name any of our neighbors. But in a bad year, if we're losing them, then it it causes a level of turmoil and instability that I don't think is sustainable, and especially when you start thinking about some of our students that cost us three, five, or eight times what we pay for our normal regular ed student. And so it, and that's all packed into one bill. And the open enrollment bills also seem to be rolling on the House side. They've already been pushed out of committee, at least in one instance. So this is gonna be a session with all the same kind of concerning topics that we've seen for the last decade. But the leadership seems to be pushing them faster and stronger. And frankly, we don't know what to think about what the governor might do with these things. He he is, to his credit, a product of his local public schools in southwest Missouri and has always been at least outwardly a supporter of public education. However, given some other issues, including maybe one we just talked about, I don't know that we can count on him to veto a bill that otherwise might land on his desk.
Any questions or thoughts? Oh, Jason, you're gonna say something?
I just wanna make sure, can you guys see me or hear me now?
Both.
Now we can, yeah.
Okay, I, this is probably, this is, I probably shouldn't say this, but I literally am at the central office and the internet here at the district just went kaput on me. So I'm on my, on all my phone. So thank you, Charles, for picking this up. And again, basically, like our furlough situation, this is actually a resolution instead of a letter. But it it just is a strong statement of how much we're opposing some of the things that are going on right now or being proposed at the state level that are, just, I'm just gonna put it out there, that are really flat out against public education. In my opinion.
I might point out that this is a nationwide effort by dark money.
It is. It is, and honestly, there are, there are some forces that have been at work in Missouri for a long time seeking to expand charter schools. You know, right now they're limited to St. Louis City and Kansas City. But honestly, you look at what has happened in those schools, and they do not perform any better than the public schools that they are intended to replace. But they do siphon money from the districts where they're residing. So I have the unique privilege of working in a fantastic school district and and living in another. And the one I live in has struggled for twenty, thirty years at least because we've tried just about every experiment to allow children to escape it that that the states come up with. And on a micro level, every parent wants absolutely the best for their child. So that I I would never argue with, right? You, everybody wants their school to be a good school. But when the state legislature is actively trying to allow parents to take their tax money and put it into unproven options like virtual education. And and by the way, I'm not necessarily totally anti-virtual, but virtual for-profit providers are making a whole lot of money in Missouri that they didn't used to make because tax dollars are being transferred there, and the legislature is determined to make it easier. For-profit charter operators are making money in Kansas City and St. Louis. I don't know why they should be able to make money in St. Charles or in Springfield or anyplace else. And then all of these efforts siphon money from the schools directly or in the case of tuition tax credit plans, they just take general revenue away that you could argue is taking money away from us and mental health and social services and prisons and all the other functions that the state funds. And by virtue of our desire to be a low-tax state, the legislature has infinite ability to cut taxes or to transfer funds. They have a very, very limited ability to increase funds. And there's no appetite to do that right now in Jefferson City at all. So that's the concern. If you were telling me they wanted to fund a virtual or charter project somewhere with new state money, it would be much harder for us to stand in opposition. But when we know this money is directly going to come out of the the funds that the state has for the eight hundred and eighty thousand children who are still in our public schools, it's very easy for us to stand and say this isn't a good op, good option.
Any discussion, any other questions? If not, I can, oh, this says information discussion, but we don't, we don't need a I would think we would need a motion for Jason and I to sign it, or Jason and me to sign it.
Yeah, there's, at first, we didn't have that, we didn't have that resolution until recent. So I think that's why we added to it. So I I think it would be good to go ahead and have the board that and then make sure that we're signing that official resolution. So we're, we're letting them know exactly how we're feeling.
Yeah, so we'll make, oh, go ahead.
I thought you all could just make the motion if it was.
Yeah. That's fine. So if if somebody will please make the motion to approve the student protection resolution as presented, I appreciate it.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Jason, I can come by, as long as we're in school tomorrow, I can come by in the morning after I drop my kids off and and come sign it.
Okay.
All right, before we move to the district financial report, I just have an opportunity, since we're talking again about legislation and all that. And Chris, I don't know if you can, if you can hear, but something that's been in the back of my mind, and I mentioned this offline to Jason in the past. But one of the things that I noticed, the the new president has mentioned that he wants to get kids back in school. And the first thing I thought was, we've had kids back in school. So, Chris, I want to challenge you, if there's any way that you can talk to people in Washington and, you know, let's, let's show the good things that our district has done for our kids and has shown how we can do it safely, not easily, right? We're not saying it was easy, but man, if there's a way that we can, we can be an example, that would be awesome. So thank you, Chris. Appreciate your work and appreciate everybody's work on on that. And and way, way to lead, everybody. Good job. All right, district financial report. Charles, back to you, sir.
Right, again, if Chris is hanging out there behind the scenes, hopefully he can pull up my presentation. If not, I'll, I'll get going and see if he he gets, catches up with us. So on the healthcare trust fund report, you can, you probably noticed, we gained almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars last month. That's because we had a really low medical month. I don't know why that is. That may be bills coming from December and and gaining a little bit over the holiday. That has not necessarily always been the case, but it was last January as well. So that's my best guess at what's going on there. And we were also in one of our low months for drugs as well. So that healthcare trust is in good shape. If you look at month end of January twenty twenty-one, we began the month with thirty-nine and a half million dollars, having already received quite a bit of the property tax on real estate. We got another significant payment on property taxes this month. So we end the month with fifty-seven point seven million dollars in the bank. Three point two million of that is, of course, in the healthcare trust that I just referenced. So one of the things that I looked at was where were we at this point after property tax collections were completed last year? Property tax collection for this year is actually slightly ahead overall from where we thought we would be in the budget. So we're in good shape there. But the overall balance, the ending fund balance for us is lower this year than it was last. There are a couple of factors there. One of them is in federal revenues. We have not invoiced the federal government for as much at this point as we had last year. In fact, this point last year, this point this year, we have three point six million dollars in federal revenue. Last year, it was a bit higher than that. And then we also had more money last year sitting in our Fund Four account for capital projects because we were still spending some bond money. So that makes the, excuse me, the overall total a little bit skewed. Bottom line, I think really overall, we're in pretty good shape for having made it through our big tax collection season. We, we have, again, like I say, fifty-four and a half, almost million dollars in the unrestricted fund balance with only three point two million of that sitting in Fund Four. So and so, Chris, if you can scroll down to the budget adjustment report, which is the final page, then you can see we, we did make a couple of changes on where budgeted expenditures were going. No updates to revenue. We will be making a revenue update at some point because there is money allocated to the state of Missouri that they have already set allocations out to school districts from the last round of pandemic assistance that was passed in December and finally signed by the president in late December. That money is available to the state right now. However, they don't have budget authority to actually spend it. So we can't access it at this point. This is a, a shot of one-time federal money. So it, it is definitely going to be helpful, but as we begin to think about how to spend that money, I'm going to strongly advocate that we spend it on one-time projects as opposed to using it for items like salaries or staffing, or, you know, holding it back to do things like that that are recurring expenses. It still has the effect of helping us overall to keep things out of the normal operating budget. And but for specifically, our, our top priority for that spending that the central office team has talked about is going to be addressing learning loss by offering regular ed summer school to those students who are behind in core areas or at the high school level who need to get credits. And then beyond that, we'll see how how much money that takes and then how much we have left. But so we will be making some revenue adjustments at some point, but it does take an act of the state legislature to allow the state the authority to spend that money. And I don't think we'll have a problem getting that passed because it is specifically allocated by the federal government to public education agencies. So the, the state can't, you know, withhold it and use it for something else. They can either choose to let us use it, or they'll have to return it to Washington. So then, very finally, at the bottom of the page, you can see we're still holding steady right around twenty-three percent in our fund balances. I think that's where we're gonna come in. But again, as I, I hope you remember from years past, that, that that is, that is an estimate that gets refined every month. So the closer we get to year end, obviously, the better our, our forecasting is on that one. But that's where we think we'll be. Any questions?
Yeah, Charles, where are we with the bridge agreement with the city? Is it a done deal?
Yes, you just actually approved that in the consent agenda tonight. So it, on our side, it's a done deal. Chris, if you wanna take down my thing, you can. So, Marita, at this point, the, by, for the city, they actually have to approve it as an ordinance. So they have to approve it at two meetings at the council level. So they will get our signed copy to be considered for approval then at two, their next two meetings. But assuming that there are no hiccups there, which we've been led to believe there shouldn't be, then we would begin sharing with them in May, give or take a couple of weeks.
And in the sharing deal, we're getting a fair shake, right?
Yes, ma'am. We, we will, we're gonna add some hours. We're gonna add ten hours right now to make sure that we have plenty of time and space available for our people. And then that's one of the things we always monitor, is to make sure that there's access. And so we want to make sure that we have access for our people, just as the city people will advocate for their folks. And then we do have a four-dollar-per-employee-per-month charge that'll come from the city to us as a payment for us, kind of as the landlords for the physical space of the clinic, to pay for upkeep and cleaning and utilities.
To your point, Marito, we love our partnerships, especially with our city, but we obviously are gonna make sure that we do things that are advantageous for us. And we have, obviously, good with our partners, but we, we feel really good about this partnership.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Charles? If not, we do need a motion to approve the district financial report as presented, please.
I saw move. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and all we need is a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second, Malone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Really good discussion. Stay safe, stay warm, and we will see you all next month.